Madam President, I make a motion, we approve the agenda with the following amendment. Remove item C1, recognition of the physical wrestling team. And then additional certified and classified personal actions for consideration, item E3.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move by John is seconded by Gloria. A third discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, say yes on, which is yours. At this point, we're to public comments, delegations, and the recognition of the nutrition services department.
We have Tracy Johnson with the S U team. And we recognize the nutrition department. She's supposed to tell us about the hardware that you just did.
Well, the first award that we got was the Healthcare U.S. Challenge Award. And it took me... It took me about two months to fill out the paperwork. And then, once it got to USDA, it took them another six months to finally get us approved. And so, basically, what it does, it says that all of our elementary and intermediate schools have met the criteria for the bronze award. And that we're serving the proper amount of fruits and vegetables, that we're supposed to be the right colors of fruits and vegetables, and we're following all the guidelines. The reason our middle school and our high school did not make it is just because some of our kids don't get enough P.E. hours. So, that was kind of a bummer, but that's kind of what it boiled down to. It takes into account physical activity and following the guidelines. The next award that I just got word that we got was certification. We got certification, which means we're going to get an extra six cents for every meal that we serve, because we're meeting the new guidelines. And that'll be proactive October 1st, I believe. So, the state was a little backlog on their paperwork, too. And then, the next award, which this is a cool one, Polly. Last year, we did our first annual 5K. And we're recognized by the state of Kansas, the Sunflower Spotlight, for promoting a healthy school environment. So, our 5K is going to be next, this Sunday, at 2:30. We would love to have all you guys come and join us. Power Panther Pow will be there. He's like this big old Power Panther costume. So, one of our employees is going to dress up as Power Panthers. And Kelly Chaney, our state consultant, will be there to award us with this award. And then, on Monday, she, we will be at Georgia Matthews', and I'll send some information out, I believe, at 9:15. And we'll do the celebration for the HUSKo Award, the Healthy U.S. Challenge Award.
Congratulations.
One note, that our high school campus is so large now, you'd think we'd get bonus points for just walking across the campus. You know, the stairs and...
To from the parking lots. That's a lot of physical activity.
Going from room to room.
Yeah. Even if you're in one of the campuses, Maryland, to the cafeterias awaits.
They are going to be holding a, I believe it's a 5K on the 20th, is that correct? At the high school. So, it'll be running around the high school.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as previously amended.
Second. The move by John is seconded by Alex. Third discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, say yes on, motion cleared. And we'll move on to the curriculum report section. Reading students, first grade rows.
Okay, many of you attended board faculty meetings this year, where we heard a common theme. And that theme was that a lot of our kindergarten students do not have the skills they need to be successful. So, Dr. Eva came back and gave us a task of putting a committee together to study the problem. We put a committee together, and I think we have an awesome committee, and they're going to share with you the results that they came up with. Okay, I would like to represent, I would like to introduce Monica Diaz, literacy coach, VO. Just going to go over here. Lindsay Morgan, kindergarten teacher, VO. Lisa Katie, kindergarten teacher, Richard Walker. Cara Drummond, Sylvia Alvarado, Out to Brown kindergarten teachers. Angie Ulrich, Kelly Carr, first grade teachers from Out to Brown. We thought we needed some first grade teachers on the committee. Skylar Leitner has an old child today, so she's home. She's kindergarten teacher, Jenny Wilson. Susan Boyle, kindergarten at Edith Sharman. Sue Dennis and Michelle DeFoye, from Out to Brown kindergarten. Karma Harmon and Connie Prock, both principals in the districts. And they're going to do the presentation for you.
The first thing we want to introduce to you guys tonight is the goal. What we're doing is we want to put structures in place to ensure that all our students are first grade ready.
Some questions surrounding our work. And the first one, sorry. The first one was, what are the issues? The second one was, what proposals are being considered from our state legislators? And the third one was, what do the experts say?
Rick DeForre's questions that framed our work. Number one, what should kindergarten students know and be able to do? What are the essential outcomes for kindergarten students? Number two, how will we know if they have learned it? What data supports the growth that we desire? And number three, what are we willing to do if they don't learn?
And the next slide is, what do we want them to learn? For our English Language Arts Skills, we want them to recognize all of their upper and lowercase letters. We want them to be able to produce all their letter sounds. We want them to produce their long and short vowel sounds. For sight words, by the end of the year, we would like to have them know their 56 sight words. When we give, when we give the test in about February, March, for parent-teacher conferences, we expect them to know about 40 sight words. We want them to sound out and read simple three-letter words. We want them to read fluently and retell a story with three parts. And we want them to write a complete sentence with capital letters, spaces, and punctuation.
For our essential mathematics skills, what we want them to know before they get to first grade is to be able to count to 100 by ones, count to 100 by tens, be able to write their numbers to 100, recognize the numbers to 100, count objects to 20, compare numbers using greater than, less than, or equal to. And show two different ways to make a number. And then, display problem-solving skills.
How will we know if the students have learned this? These are the assessments they will use. It's the letter-sound checklist, the Ames-Webbs Assessment, which is new this year, and it addresses math and reading. DRA Assessment, which is a reading assessment, the writing rubrics, and math checklist.
Okay. What are we willing to do if they've not learned it? First, we assume that all students have received a quality first instruction, preparing them for first-grade levels. So, we assume that all of our kindergarten teachers are giving that quality education and instruction. And we assume that they have had the access to the explicit and targeted intervention, which comes through our NTSS interventions. And we have a rubric score, which we haven't discussed yet, from the assessments. And so, there will be a target number, that if the child is below that number, we would like to retain them. If they are at or above, then they would move on to first.
And this is the rubric we developed. And as a committee, we looked at some of these things, that we said, these is what they need to know. And we kind of picked out the most essential. Because, as Lisa pointed out this morning, there is a difference between being first-grade proficient and first-grade ready, or first-grade prepared. And so, we had seven language arts and six math. And one of the things we really tried to concentrate on is that it wouldn't create a lot of extra testing, that most of these things, these are what's already on the report card. And so, teachers wouldn't have to do a lot of extra work. And we have it all divided down, and so, you can score a three, a two, or a one. And we kind of did a little probably unscientific test, and came up with the number of 23. That if they score 23 or below, we probably need to really consider whether or not they're ready for first grade.
There's a copy of a part of our brochure on the screen that we'll be giving to parents at kindergarten roundup, or when they enroll their child. We thought it was so important that the parents knew exactly what their child would be doing in kindergarten. Not just what they were expected to learn. And that's, this section here is the same, that was on the previous slide. But also, what our day looks like, and why we're expecting these things.
And our daily typical kindergarten day is 90-minute reading block, 60 to 90-minute math block, 30-minute reading/writing block, sometimes it's more. 30-minute independent reading, 30-minute science block, calendar, math board, intervention, and enrichment assessment, and physical education, and music.
On the back of our brochure, it has some neat information on things that parents can do to help their child read every day, read signs, you know, use the things around you, talk to your child. And then, some additional resources, if they have access to a computer, that there's some fun games. Just letting them know, your child is expected to learn a lot more than what you probably did in kindergarten, and maybe what their older sibling needed to do in kindergarten. So, the parents will know this right away.
Going along with that, some support for the parents, we created two different kind of flip charts, that you can probably see. One is for reading, and one is for math. And they are broken by skill. And it's just a support for the parent to kind of know how they can help their child, and also to foster communication between parents and teachers, possibly during conferences, just to let them know what skills the child is working on.
Our committee would like the Board of Education to consider mandatory retention for students who have not mastered these kindergarten concepts according to their final rubric score.
This action will help us accomplish our goal to put structures in place, so that every child is first grade ready.
I would like to thank the committee for all of the hours of work they put in. I know this was done very quickly, but I would say they each put in over 10 hours of work, really considering what they were asking here, talking to other kindergarten teachers. They had a presentation for them this morning, and I think pretty much everybody bought into what you guys are saying. They felt like this is needed. But I would like to thank you guys for your consideration of this proposal. It didn't come easily for them. I know, in the midst of the process, they talked about kinder prep, they talked about summer school, what's really going to be best for our kids. So, this was their outcome. This is good, this is good work. So, I'm sure they're open to any questions. I'm sure you'd ask them.
Did you consider on the rubric, calling it first-grade-ready rubric versus kindergarten-retention? Because it just has a more positive spin to it.
Yeah, it does, very much so.
Good, thank you.
And the other thing is, on your, on the slide that said, what do we want them to learn? It included reading fluently, which I can't do, obviously. Read fluently and retell a story with three parts. The governor's trying to push us into having third graders read fluently, and we're to the point where we want first graders fluent before they leave kindergarten, correct? And do you think that that's a manageable task?
That is a Common Core goal.
Okay.
So, we have no choice.
Okay. And it's not on the rubric, though. To read fluently is not on the rubric.
Well, that's the DRA.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's included, it's included there.
Assessment.
And comprehension, yeah, comprehension.
And DRA stands what?
Diagnostic reading assessment.
Okay, thank you.
And we...
That would be awesome.
You know, like at a DRA level of three to four, would be awesome, but three is a good start.
Good.
That will check the fluency and the comprehension of, and accuracy.
And I wanted to say something. I'm, like I said this morning, I'm very happy that we're doing this. Because for me, as a parent and as a teacher, it's very sad to weigh onto there in third grade, to decide if the student needs to stay, you know, retain. And for me, they're more knowledgeable on their self-esteem. And for me, kinder, you know, if they pass or don't pass a rubric, I think it's better retention in kinder than wait on third grade to retain the student. So, for me, it's something, like, it's a pilot thing, but I hopefully, I say hope, that we can do it. So, not to weigh onto third grade, that everybody, parents and children, will not like, oh my God, I have to retain, it's going to be embarrassing for me. And they're going to be prepared, more prepared, when they go to second and third, so, I don't know.
I agree with you completely. And I would much rather them to start off, you know, with all their skill sets intact when they start in first grade. I just think it would be best for the teachers and the students. You've done a tremendous amount of work.
This proposal would also give us more consistency across the district.
Exactly.
Because we don't, at the time, really have a consistent way of retaining kids. And so, this would give every teacher, every kindergarten teacher, a guideline.
I would assume that there's going to be a significantly higher number of students that have two years of kindergarten than they do now. Would you disagree with that?
I disagree with that. I do. I think it will target ones that truly need that whole year of kindergarten again. I think it may even be a little lower.
You just want to talk about your pilot. Some of that rubric was created, they took it and had a practice for some of their kids.
I took it, and there were five to seven kids that, in our school, were being discussed if you retain. So, I took the rubric, and they weren't my students. So, I was kind of a non-biased person, and did it with them. And I think now we're only having two that are going to be retained. I think sometimes, and it's nothing against new teachers, it's just something that you learn as you go. You think, well, they're not getting this, they're not getting this. But on the whole, maybe it's just one area that needs more targeted instruction and intervention, rather than a whole, another year of kindergarten. They need to know exactly what that is. And then, be prepared, that first, the start of the year at first grade, to get that child and intervene immediately, and have it identified.
So, who would be doing the rubric? And this may be too much nautical, but in your example, you, they weren't your kids, you were a little less biased, maybe because you're not dealing with those kids on a day-to-day basis. So, are we going to have other teachers implementing the rubric to see, okay, does it fall in there? Or is some of that bias...
I think that's why we have the rubric. So, it's not. But the teachers who had these kids were of the mindset, just, they didn't have a rubric, and they didn't know what their score would be. So, they didn't have something to follow. And so, they just thought, we need to retain, we need to retain, I need to retain them, I need to keep them back.
And you didn't have anything to follow or to focus on.
Right. And so, it would be the classroom teacher doing that assessment. And it's already done. I mean, we do it all the time. These are all Common Core standards. So, it's not going to be like a huge additional assessment. And we wouldn't do it on every, the rubric would not be assessed for every single child. It would just be for the ones that we are worried about and thinking of retaining.
Because the rubric is like a summary of all our assessment, put it in one. So, that's why we would have to look at this, look at the DRA, so we have just one page, and it would be easier.
I gave it to my classroom teacher, kindergarten teacher. We had one at Georgia Matthews', we were debating about retaining. She knew very little about the committee. I showed it, shared it, and I said, do you want to try this with your students that were looking at retention? She sat down, she did, she came back, and she said, he's right on, he's exactly, I think he scored 21. But she was able to take that document, use it with her child, and draw a conclusion, because it's stuff that they already do.
My initial concern with that is, is the rubric too generous, in order to allow too many students to pass. Do you see what I'm saying?
I think it's a bit rigorous.
Okay.
They tweaked the numbers. Several of you took it back and tried, and they, the number wasn't just established and left alone. They played with that number till they found what they thought was right.
We had a lot of comments from the kindergarten teachers about that this morning. And we said, you know, let's just use up this first year as a pilot, and if we need to tweak it next year, that's fine. But we'll be able to get a pretty good indication of how it's going to work.
I think this piece will help you get buy-in from the parents, so there's no question. And of course, we'll be having multi-language, and it'll be good.
The great thing about the rubric is, maybe you're not a Level 3 DRA, but you know everything else. That doesn't mean you're going to be held back, you know? Or maybe you don't know every number to 100, but you can read really well. So, there's some balance in there. It's not a cut-and-dry. Since it is a rubric, you come up with a more balanced view. And one of the kindergarten teachers this morning had a great question. She said, can we do it again on the same challenge in April, to see if we've had growth from February to April? And so, I thought that was a good idea, too. Something to talk about, maybe. So, you'd have more than, maybe we would have more than one, you know, chance. Because if you show so much growth in that amount of time, then maybe it is showing that they're more ready toward the end of the year.
And like you said about the brochure and the flip-flop, it's like I always say, we have to educate not even, not only the children, but the parents. Because they really need to be at the same page. Because I have a lot of parents, and we have a lot of parents that they don't even know how to read. So, I think that is, this will be another resource or tool to the parents, to be educated as same as their children.
Flashcards, with their sight words, would help a whole family. One of the questions that we always, almost always get, when we're at a board faculty meeting, is, when are you bringing kinder prep back? And you're saying that we should be doing this instead of kinder prep. Can you explain why you, what the rationalization, or, I mean...
I think a better way of looking at it would be to have early childhood education available for every four-year-old. Instead of saying, let's just have this specific bunch of kids in a kinder prep program, I think it, my grandiose idea would be that, through the district, every four-year-old in Garden City someday would be enrolled in our early childhood program. I know that's a lot of dollar signs, and a lot of, you know, dreaming, but to me, that would be a better scale idea than a kinder prep. We've done kinder prep, and I taught it one year with Mary Lou Clark. And it was a great program. But you still have a limited number of kids that can go. You still have to come up with a screener to decide. Everything has pros and everything has cons. But if we could get every single four-year-old into an academic program like our Early Childhood Center, that would be the best. That would be awesome, because we have lots of kids who don't qualify for that, but yet their parents can't afford a private preschool, and would like to see their kids in a program in the district. I think by the Early Childhood Center being more focused on instruction, if you looked at, I don't know if you've seen the draft of their report card, that's going to help kindergarten grade do. They're really focusing. And we looked at that during our meetings, and I know the teachers were all excited, because they're addressing things a lot more focused and fine-tuning at an earlier age now. So, hopefully...
That's an actual rigorous curriculum.
Yes, that is.
Yeah, it's impressive.
When will you implement the first rubric test? It says March, April, using the third quarter data.
It would be next year.
So, will there be... I'm sorry.
It would be next year.
Right. But I mean, for that first year, you'd wait till the March, April, the following year to do your rubric test. What indicators are you going to be able to have to help keep parents' body and a part of their child learning to meet this rubric, if you will? And not have a parent-teacher bull up at the end, when they want their kid to go on and...
Well, I think the key is communication, first of all. You know, you have your data, you have your assessments, and you have to keep that, those parents, you know, informed, and keep the communication open. And have your data available to show the parent, this is where your child is now, this is where they need to be, and we're going to watch this and see if there is growth. And you have to, you know, be positive and have a relationship with those parents, so they trust your data and what you want to, what you want to recommend for their child.
What will it be like, first semester, second semester?
Really...
Well, we'll have their teacher conferences.
Parent-teacher conferences.
In February, we have the parent-teacher conference times in January, and I think that's a good time to show the parents, this is where your child is, this is where your child needs to be by March or April. So, unless we get here, retention is very much a possibility.
But even in October, those kids who have not made the growth that you want to see, we already start communicating, we're very concerned. We need your help, too, because they are not getting, and we tell them, these are the interventions they're getting, this is how much extra time. And get them to also buy into that education and those academics, and then keep communicating with them. The ones that we would identify as, oh my gosh, this is a red flag, we want to be in very good, you know, communications with them to keep working together, so there's no surprises.
Well, you might be able to find a parent that can read or write.
There's a lot.
Or communicate with their child at that same time.
I have probably 50% of my students, their parents don't read or write English. Either one. And some of them don't read or write, they're native language. I would say 40% of them don't.
Parents love their children, and they want their children to do well. And I think they realize that we really, we respect them, and we want the best for their child, too, you know? And so, giving them a good start, I think, is, you know, helps everybody. When they understand that's our true goal, is just to make sure the child feels confident and ready to take on new challenges. It's a good feeling, you know? And you can see that in a child's face, and the parents understand that.
Plus, if our governor thinks third grade's the best, he's wrong. I'll say it. He's wrong. And kindergarten, if we have to retain, is the time to do it.
Earlier the better.
So, what do you see is the biggest challenge for USD 457 taking advice and implementing this proposal?
Support to retain. Support to retain. The backup, to know that we have made the best recommendation, and to have the backup to actually follow through with it. Because if we don't have that, none of this will work.
Because otherwise, then...
The parents make the decision, and that child goes on not ready. Now, when they get to third grade, and then the governor says, no, you're staying back, they'll stay back in third grade, if he chooses to try.
And that thing proceeds, but...
I don't think it will.
We're talking about what you've got here, and it's a fabulous effort. All the questions I had, the questions that fellow board members had, and you answered them, and pretty exciting.
Well, I think everyone's shocked at the kindergarten Common Core standards, and what kindergartners have to do.
Thank you.
And this is going to be a great way for many people to understand what's expected of kindergartners also, with our kindergarten roundup that we're going to do. We're excited about, we can really communicate with parents.
To me, that's the most exciting part, is the parent communication that's going to go along with this. On kindergarten enrollment date, kindergarten parents will receive the brochures, they will know upfront what's expected. know upfront what's expected. That communication will happen all summer, all next year, and there should be no surprises.
There's always something.
I think having the parents buy-in from the get-go, and all the literature that you put out there, which is great, helped me understand how that early childhood was pushing the limits, but you guys, are you going a step further?
I've only had one parent since I've worked here who didn't agree to retain their child.
And with that buy-in throughout the year, and the semester, and pulling the parent in, talking to them, and bringing them on speed, I think if there is a child that has to be retained, I think it's going to be better understood by both parties.
Well, I'm really excited about this, too, because I've got a first and second grader, and when I enrolled my kindergartner, okay, you're in kindergarten, good luck. Their school.
Just start teaching algebra now.
Yeah, and actually, Mrs. Dennis was very nice, and showed him the classroom when she was at our school, and he was really awed by the library, Mrs. Dennis' personal library.
That's awesome.
But, yeah, I mean, this information, I think, will be great, because I'm not that far from it, I'm still, I still remember the feeling of loss in talking to others who are new to the school district as well, the feeling of loss when they sent their kids to kindergarten as well. I really like this. My question is for, and I'm just curious, do you have a problem getting the parents in of your kindergartners for those parent-teacher conferences, so you can start talking about these issues in October and in February? How hard is that communication piece going to be for the kindergarten teachers?
You know, in our building, we are required to have one-hundred percent conference attendance. So I just say, "The day before conferences, now remember, your parents don't come." I have to come to your house, and everyone comes. I did have to meet one parent at a car, because she had some other issues with another child in the district, and so I just met her at a car, and had he been a candidate for retention, I would have been more insistent that she actually come in for a meeting. I just think you build that all year, and I don't think it's as hard, I don't know.
Most of us are willing to meet at a different time, other than the set conference time, and that doesn't work for a parent. We try our best to make it work for them.
Teachers are pretty persistent in getting, especially when they have, you know, they have concerns to communicate. If they have to go to their place of enjoyment, they need that.
And I think our parents in Garden City now want to know. Over the years I've been here, they didn't always want to know what was going on with their child, and really, we have very few parents that we really have to work on for conference times and extra meetings.
Well, I've heard a variety from, I've worked at one, like, some say it's really hard, others say, you know, "We get them all in, there's just one or two that we have to take that extra effort with." So that's why I'm asking, where do you think it is right now?
And the younger they are, I think, the more eager they are to come in.
And I also think with giving them the feedback, we'll get them in the conference more, because they already know what is expected from their child, and so they're going to want an update, because they know if their child does not make that, at the end of the year, they're going to be retained. So that would even give more emphasis on coming in during the parent-teacher conferences.
And there should be no surprises at conferences. If there's a problem big enough that it's going to be a surprise or a shock, that parent should have already been contacted on a one-to-one basis, not at a conference, not to put it off no conferences. Well, I think this is a really good goal, that we are trying to get these students first grade ready. I do have some concerns, though, and I guess initially, we're providing a lot of written information to parents to assist their children, and yet, you know, apparently, have or so can't read English. And that's where that roundup will be awesome? That's not that helpful. This flyer does say that promotion and retention decisions will be based on mastery of the skills listed below, but it doesn't say by whom, and I'm assuming that it's the teachers, then, with the principal's support, who will make that decision. And I think that is usurping the prerogative of the parent. I think that it is our job to inform the parent of all of the information, and where their child stands, and what needs to be done to make them as ready as possible for first grade, and the ramifications of what will happen if they go in unprepared. But I think ultimately, it should be the parent's decision, and not the district's decision, to decide if their child is retained or not. And from what I'm hearing, apparently, in the past, we really haven't had an issue with this, where teachers thought it better to retain a child, and the parents disagreed, and the child advanced. So I don't understand why we're imposing such a really strict decision based on what appears to be a few assessments that really only provide a snapshot of that child's progress. You know, when we were looking at state assessments, we would often hear that, "Well, this is just a snapshot of what that student is doing at one point in time," and it doesn't show, you know, what the growth has been for that student, or, you know, what they might have done on a different day. So I'm quite uncomfortable with making such a big decision for the parents, based on what I perceive to be rather limited information, and also us taking over the role of what I think should be the parent's choice with their child. That is their child, and I would imagine that they have other things that they're thinking about than just their academic success in school. I don't doubt that this might, following your advice, would probably be the best course of action, but I think to mandatorily impose your advice on the parents is not the way to go. I think probably the better way to go would be to have the meeting with the parents and make your recommendation, and provide them with the information, so that they could make a good, informed choice for their child. I can't imagine that if you had a parent objecting to this, that that second year would gain much more cooperation or trust on behalf of the parents. So I would like to see it maybe somewhat revised to allowing the parent to have the final decision. And I also would like to see the retention and held-back language somewhat revised to first grade ready, or so as to avoid any stigma. The child at that age is really, we're talking the development of the child and things that they really have a lot of, not very much control over. So I'd like to keep any sort of language that might be stigmatized that child away from this type of program. And we can definitely make those adjustments on that rubric, but if you find anything else that states it in language that's maybe a little too harsh, just let us know in the district's direction.
Well, a clarification we need to make sure everybody understands is that when we were going to the faculty meetings, I know Laura, Alex, I think Tom even was, were all with me at different ones, and there were several others that I didn't attend, and we were getting comments like, "We don't know what we should be retaining, we don't know what threshold would mean retention." And every school has their own philosophy on how to let these students go through the process, and I think that is one major advantage to this. Regardless of whose choice it is, I think trying to get the district on one page and treating all the schools the same is to the advantage of the district. So I think that's where this came from primarily. I also want to thank you guys, in a very, very short amount of time, like, what, were you charged with this maybe six weeks ago? You came up with a plan with background information, you have supportive information, that's amazing, that's really good work.
Well, thank you very much. And it's an excellent, although I'd just like to hopefully teach some relations to this, to allow parents to still make the ultimate decision. Thank you very much.
I want to add a quick ruling as well here. You've spent a lot of time, even though it was a short timeframe of six weeks or so, these people did all this work outside their contract time. And I know they spent at least fourteen to sixteen hours in meetings, and then on top of that, they spent time in researching what they did, what they come up with, educational best practices, in order to come to you tonight with their best thinking. I heard them this morning give a presentation to the rest of the kindergarten, kindergarten teachers. How did you feel that was received by your colleagues?
Very well, very well. They were really positive.
I felt the same way, and that was my observation, and what I took from the meeting as well. And expectations for kids are getting higher, they're not getting lower. Whether it's no child left behind, the Common Core standards, these kindergarten teachers were the first to feel the stress and the pressure of the Common Core. They were the first to initiate the curriculum, and I think they've tried to initiate it with fidelity. I think we're seeing the same thing in first grade, and so on, and I think you'll see it throughout the district. And I think what they're emphasizing to you this evening is how you can support them. And I know there's some philosophical differences here on mandatory retention, and I know that we certainly want the parent with us and not against us, because there's twelve, you know, twelve more years of education. But what I'm hearing them say, if we can do a pilot of this for a year, and implement the retention, and come back to you next year to see where we are, and maybe do it another year to see where we are, and make a few tweaks to it, to make it better and better. But this is a grassroots effort on the part of the professional teaching staff to try to remedy a problem that the board and I heard over and over and over again in faculty meetings from our staff. And I just applaud you. I appreciate the extra time that you spent, I appreciate you coming this evening, I appreciate you talking to your colleagues this morning, it's always tough. Tougher to talk to your colleagues than coming properly to the board meeting, but I want to thank you, and see where this goes.
Can I say something? I understand, this paper, but it's, for me, it's sad. Like, I was, I mean, I'm a first grade teacher, but now I'm in kinder, and they came to me in the last parent-teacher conference in January. Second grade teacher came, "How you have, when you have this girl in first grade, what do you feel about her?" Well, I told her, and then she said, "I'm going to retain her." And I said, "Oh, my God." You know, for me, so sad, you know, that they have to retain them when they, when they're building their self-esteem, you know, for me, it's very sad. And I understand that you want the parents to decide, but sometimes, like, especially in this period with my nephew, he needed to be retained in high school. He dropped out of high school, even though my brother said, "No, you're going to stay in high school." So that's, when I was doing the researches, that's what I, as a mom, and as a friend, you know, I don't want my friend high school be, drop out, you know, in middle school, because, you know, why wait? That's why I, and it's a factor, but when I was doing the research, it's one of the common factors why students drop out of high school, because of retention. And I think that if we wait, like, with all my respect, like, if we wait for the parents, sometimes the parents say, "No, she can, she knows the letter." I say, "I understand that, but can she write at least a sentence?" It's like the Common Core is, it's like kinder is not kinder anymore. It's first grade, almost, to second grade. And it's sad to say, "Okay, you can go," and then you hear, "Okay, she's going to be retained in second and third grades." So that's why we want to do this, because it's sad for me, for the student, when you see them, they do like that, because they feel ashamed that they're being retained in third grade. That's, I don't know, that's what I wanted to say, it's my feeling.
Is this going to be a call that only two of them can respond, or is this something happening?
We can pilot, we can pilot the program. We present to you such evidence, and we can approve a pilot program for a year, and have those come back as part of your work, to those if you wish, and report to you next year, wherever they are in this process, what successes are they having, what pitfalls are they having. And then if you get it here, we can make adjustments to it and pilot it again, and see how it's working. And maybe it comes out to where, God, the mandatory retention, we feel like we're losing parents and not keeping up with this. That may be what they come back with, it may not be, I don't know. You're blazing a new trail here, and I don't know that a lot of school districts are doing what we're trying to do, but not a lot of school districts look like we look.
And a lot are not as proactive and innovative as we are. And I'm a mom, too, and I don't want someone to have total control over my child's, every educational decision. Well, I think we are blazing a new trail, but we should start with smaller steps, rather than going to that. There are so many things in our life, especially telling our children that we think parents ought to be doing for their children, but we don't allow the government to sort of usurp that decision. Vaccinations are a good example. Doctors recommend them, they're a very good idea, but some parents choose not to do that, and some with dire consequences. But we, you know, the government hasn't turned around and said, "We're vaccinating every child, whether you'd like it or not." That's a different situation, but it's very similar type of situation, where we're making a decision off the bat, based on limited data, and not allowing any objection. I would like to see us start a little smaller and have the entire program, but with asking parents to buy-in. I think it will take a little more effort on our part to educate the parents, but everything you do to educate those parents at that kindergarten level is going to carry all the way through for twelve years after. So I think it's a real, you know, it's got a lot of payback for us. We also need to, just, I'm sure you're already informed of this, but we don't retain special education children, and we don't retain on language. Those are several things that we do take into consideration. And I know kids are all different developmentally, I see them every day, but Common Core is not developmental, and that's a sad part of it. It's not developmental, and every child is different, and they develop at a different rate. But to me, those standards, it's intense, and it's rigorous, and it's targeted instruction. It is academic from top to bottom, and those are just some things to keep in mind, that that Common Core is not a developmental program. When we adopted that, we knew that. It is academics.
But I think they're very good points to discuss with the kindergarten parents and the preschool parents.
I think down the road, if we put something like this in place, and we send the kids to first grade that are ready and are on grade level, it's going to free up time with our interventionists, and they're going to be able to focus more on needed instruction with more lower-level kids and less kids, and we all know with budget cuts, we're losing interventionists all the time. So if we send kids on ready and on grade level, hopefully, that will help everybody all the way up.
And do you have the particulars of the pilot program, how many students, what buildings?